Without. Live on the snowy road. Flower regularly. We never see dirt getting by that flower. See snow moving to the side, but we've never dirt on top. It never moved. That's another invalid excuse. To. Why we should not do what almost every road commission does in every major road agency. And uh. All of them. A major agency say this is the proper way to maintain a dirt road. It's always brown it. Prepare it with the right materials so that it'll harden and so forth. For them to say this is unusual and can't do it. They got a hundred reasons. Primary one.
You're yeah, and at the other day, I'm not in the truck, right? If I.
I talked to the guys in the truck.
I try.
They told me they can do it. The guys in the truck tell me they can do it.
They come down there?
Well, heck yeah, I stop every time. Are you kidding me?
If if you're moving in snow and suddenly you're hitting frozen dirt. Think you're gonna know that it's.
I would say, but I, yeah.
I'm not trying to be.
We, no, I, I. We have no leverage whatsoever with the road. Our leverage is here, we'll cut you a check, do this work, that that is it. If we're not doing that, we have we have nothing to say.
In in December, we talked about asking someone to come up with a professional spec for what needs to be done to the road. And then provide it to the road commission, asking them to put it out for bid as they do with all of their other projects. Put it in their hands to go through the process their way. And that we can get the commissioners to direct the manager to do it as they do all of their other projects. Then it's the road commission accepting the bid, maybe we pay the price with the pound shift. But that's the only way to get it done. That takes it out of the dirt pump and be able to steer it one way or another or structure it or whatever. But in the end, it is the responsibility of the county road. To maintain that. They have failed miserably maintaining what. Road falls into the lake. We have had there at Bay Harbor, they finally put the light in after somebody got killed. The residents got, well, we need a light here. Oh, you don't, somebody dies. There's a light there. Is that what needs to happen?
I hope not.
It was a.
Is that what else we want to talk about?
There you go. You know, I have have some people here that need change and need repairs, but it's out of our hands. So. We can talk all day, but things like gotta go somewhere. We can drive. Post, drive. Thought it. All gotta move. So. It becomes to some point. That you can't do anything, and so we can just keep talking. There is another option that I wrote in a letter. Take the road commission out of the. Let's let two commissioners do that. Well, we've appreciated the support of this board. Agenda item here.
You think that on there for.
You know, I guess, Alex, the. The final question, I'm glad that there are those three. Both. But um. At that road commission meeting where they made the motion. Goldberg worked with you to get some of the. Where do we stand?
That's a good. The way I understood it is that Berg had to look over them and decide if he wanted to. Still hasn't told whether or not to ensure. Shake your head every time, I know, I I know, but I.
There is, there is, there is a motion that was agreed unanimously by the road commission.
We wanted to take it on.
And then he couldn't deal with the dollars. I look, there is something we can do when. Third thing.
Alright. Cool. You've heard it. It is, it is a concern. Get you guys, I have leverage either. Except to take it back. That wouldn't hurt my. Say.
Eight counties in the state have a road commission that is part of the.
Eight.
Pardon me, eight. There's a law that that can correct those eight counties that believe it's.
Awesome.
I got some three towns.
Alright, wonderful. I did talk to, uh. Right. And uh. Give you some tips, but uh. Try to. Keep people from get out of the car. Signage up because don't get out of your car. Help to get out. At least then you have the way you drove past two signs, don't get out of your car. At the same time. Say stop doing it.
Is there a problem or is there a complaint or a danger of risk?
Did you ask him about a member of the county getting a car?
I did not ask.
We talked about a risk that one of us. We've had that people can't really back up the guy. We've always done that, but you know, we live in such a society anymore.
I was on the court when we initiated the council. Yep. Requirement early on that the residents that take their stuff and be the ones who are owners and really most easily have to handle it. To be honest, I think it's an excellent opportunity for families and residents to help their own pay up and do some of the work and see where it goes and how it's done. Children, parents are there. Probably stay for the ballgame, actually. Carriage goes so slow and lots of adults for oversight. That's bring up a child in the way. Could do is ready right here. Right like you hear next month to talk about valuation of vehicles and stuff like that. Question directly.
Really it's March.
So where are we?
Not familiar with it. After the last cleanup. Mike.
Oh.
And uh, so. You know, legit. Kitchen renovations. Being done. Unfortunately, he's not here, but uh, if he's there. Anyway, it started tearing stuff out. I left the document documentation here. Uh, there's nothing new to report about the. Real layout here. How about the? Okay.
Yeah. Maybe just have some maybe some in their solo neighborhood. And then if you need to be there in the back of the store or something. But if the people been driving around the.
Okay. Modern lights, but.
Um, yeah.
Well, if you. I looked at the. They do match the upstairs members well, you can't tell from the. This one won't latch, but I think that would be easy for it.
You said that if. No. More stuff to do.
I was still. I think last time we agreed and get a couple of quotes.
I did, I have quotes. I don't know.
Okay. Alright, Council of Attorney.
I spoke to a gentleman about. He impressed me in Council of Attorney. Does that regularly. Glad to do with his proposal. What he is so. What he does. I mean. He he would be. I think he would be very personal, more personal than having a big law firm, plus he's from a large community, more than a large size community or needs. That he would hold the one eighty dollars per two years. Hopefully, uh, he can still. I think it'd be better for us than one serving of services. Regularly.
Um, if you guys want to do the actual RFP. See other municipal attorneys that may be. With us.
Right now.
Yeah, that's a status quo.
Do you want the status quo? Obviously, so.
The same. Yeah, it's the same. Help protect that. By understanding that there's going to be a present. I. That's what I'm doing now. I will. Well, that would request.
Be basically what we've got here on other. Other interests.
Yep.
Instead of. Probably more of the same. Probably this guy seems really well qualified, our company probably is.
Yeah. Yeah. Anyway, as of the last meeting, I wasn't planning on doing RFP, so let's. Better off putting it out. But he might be the right guy, but. He's put it out there. We got, we're gonna depart from the one that has been taken over, purchased. Studies. Again, go back to transparency and all. About it. It may be the right one, um, but. Sort of, he's got the opportunity here. Um, that's the. Before us.
Thought the same thing. Go to a new company, you know, at least see some options.
Yeah, that's fine, I got a problem. Might make a, I'll make a motion for an RFP for the Council of Attorney support. And uh, all of you say hi. Hi. What was his name? Who's your one combination?
I think one Katie. Did a little work with Bethany. Writing one of those, a draft, and wanted to do that tonight. He was.
Pushing on. The rush. Okay.
What's the question?
Oh, the land combination.
Oh, are you working with the assessors to make sure that it's compliant with the land and the laws and all that? Do you want to, they'll be writing that?
They're writing proposals, because if if you divide. Have one, one application for the combination.
Yeah.
It would really simplify those.
Yes, but you need to make sure you work on it. Oh, it's a five. It's a fifty five page law. So you gotta make sure. Law.
Yes. That's next. We got the bid from the county to improve that. So, because we. Go ahead, but I did ask, I talked to Berg about it, about whether or not it was class A. It's not technically a class A road, but the two ways of asphalt, um, to improve the string. And uh, he mentioned that. I'm aware it's a four hundred and fifty. Four hundred and twenty years, so. Wasn't. You know. Well, that was. We're gonna make it class A. Did not. That was my theory out of it. I'm not gonna bump it up to class A. Two fifty eight minus the. County's uh. Alright, motion on the table.
For how much?
Two fifty eight minus uh. Forty two.
Waiting the entire year about knowing. So if we wanted to do anything, I could have been.
No. I'm gonna read you.
Three. That was what? Two sixty seven. Plus. So, what is it right now?
Twenty two thousand.
Twenty two thousand. And Levy was.
That was.
That's.
That's what's coming.
Two hundred and twenty three. That's all. Plus the metro access one is four five thousand. So that would be it. Entire year.
Twenty two, twenty two plus the two. Seven. Certainly enough to cheat. People will tell me that there's enough gravel down. But. There's enough money to cheat. I don't know. I'm all ears, right? But right now, none of us have what we want to. We're willing to spend money. Plan if we want to have. We'll push it on one more one, but. Schedule. So Bart made the motion. Start a further discussion on.
So the uh, that one was in the Charlotte County, and that's been recently done.
Also important to do this month.
Are we discussing?
I don't know if it's.
You don't know if they have a.
The other. Potential, right, there's a potential that. When you're losing. Or being robbed or trying to use some funding from the state to work on the road, but. That's better than what.
Much funding have we gotten?
You know.
You're all about.
It wasn't, it wasn't. Just saying, it's, it's more of a chance than we had with somebody helping. Or you got.
Not.
Kind of a picket, which.
Right.
It's also.
Main church and fair. That's the worst part. Yeah, I think.
It was. Alright, um, Dave Carter from Seminary Restoration. Preservation.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, he started with a really old one. And he goes in and he brings up, you know, something that I used to know. And then if there is some. So we thought it'd be the oldest. There's one thing. Four. And that's one of the theory. Well, I mean, there are some very. So it's, he's one of the few people I think in the area, in the state that does that. So he comes up every year, he gives a budget, five thousand, he sells these seven thousand. He does that much work. And. And it's like a less summer and a little bit more and a little bit less. He calls it. He said he was two thousand five, he said he has to make it worth his time. Your family relationship.
How many stolen things were found for that money? Hundreds of them?
Uh, we don't. Uh, that's.
Probably hundreds.
And you know who would know? You can talk.
Eric. Eric, I'm. Oh. I, I would like to talk to him.
Okay, yeah, I can get you a phone number.
Thank you.
Oh.
I'll try to come back.
Do it or, yeah, ju- not, not what Carter. Well, they're doing, but she's doing that. Okay, just with this. Just with cameras and stuff when they're talking. Like. If we, if there was stuff that we. Whatever, whatever. That's something that like for, we have a. She would know more about it. But we're not going to make a decision about that, what I'm hearing. And I.
I'd like to talk about the budget first.
Okay.
Come back.
Okay.
All right, federal resolutions. Put that in the budget. How do we get the budget? Sorry. I guess that's one of the budgets. All right, so I'm going to. Recess. So I need a motion to recess and go into the public hearing for the budget. Motion. Our support and discussion.
I just have a question. Find out, does anyone here specifically want that public hearing? Because otherwise, if we just kept going.
Oh, the salaries and stuff? I appreciate Mark, Mark's here for the budget too. Any other discussion? All papers. All right. Start with the. General fund. Budget, anybody having. Public comments on budgets. Or comment on the budget. This is budget to actual, this is just this year versus this year's done. So that one's irrelevant. This has the same information that these two come on. Go ahead. I did have a question on the first one. Got property taxes at a hundred and twenty-four thousand and only. Thousand so far.
Yeah, yeah. So what that is, is, um, it's the delinquent that was paid. And then I've been collecting all of this. And I'm getting my. That's why it's that small number. It's that little bit of the. So then I will enter. Right now, it's a hundred and eight, six forty-two, seventy-one, a hundred and seventy-five thousand. That's where I. So that's. What I will dispute in, and then the other will come from the county. That's.
It's a check. Some people probably pay in December.
Oh, so every, okay, so the county, all the schools, all the. Char, everything. That by law, I have to pay everything. But I remember that's. So yes, these of all. County pays. Elsberg School, Central Lake School, Charlotte High School, Charlemagne, the library, Lord Valley. It's just the. Yeah, yeah.
Wait, wait, you receive a check or?
Oh, absolutely, yes, absolutely, yes, but it's my way of receiving it. Yeah, all these others have to be paid on the first day. I'm, I'm paying the tax. So people that pay their taxes. It's been fifteen days.
What?
It's just the way we've always done it. And the auditors told me just to be consistent with. I mean, if the board wants it done differently, if they want it done every fifteen days.
I don't see a reason to have. In March, note, I know roughly what the numbers. I don't. Add. Uh. I live in New York. I, I just up the salaries for proceeds. The supervisor clerk. Preseral position up three percent. Roughly. So that's. Again, we have to back the salary resolution. Where we want to be, but that was my initial thought on that. We got the forty grand in. Challenge of all, still the improvement. Uh, potential on the basement windows and other not the kitchen. It's all done and forty-nine. Roughly forty, all in. That. Ten of it so far, thirty left. And then the question. That's. Forty. Number. In the cemetery, it's missing. You have seven thousand and that four thousand number. Uh, for. I have seven, Mary. Um. Right now, I kept the cleanup data, twenty-one thousand. Spent sixty-five on it in the past. Last year, I think spent nine or a thousand for egg. So I threw fifteen hundred in case we go that route. Also have a new three thousand in case the state doesn't. Still have not filled out the application for. Guessing they're not going to do it, but. So I don't know. They have a plan to pay for all of it. Up around. Maybe higher depending on the. Maybe that should be part. Rescue Department, I put one of those things in there. Potential of buying a enclosed trailer or dive equipment. Mark's here. Dive equipment, uh, the. Six by six, the, the animal authority has offered itself to us for a dollar. Actually call that for us. Stuff around. Five thousand years fireworks and big girls. Anyway, that's my highlights. So. This. Balance that projected beginning balance is that. That's what it is today, so. Probably. Put other checks.
It changes.
That's what we have today. But then it'll go up if we get all the.
Yes.
Well, it should be, that should be. Yep, profits are the prop- the property taxes. That she hasn't posted yet, so they're not in the actual number. Are they included? I would assume that we pull that from the bank statement.
Well, yes, so three oh six, what are. Hundred thousand coming out. Um. And then. Hundred and eight thousand. Yeah, we'll give another twenty thousand dollars for the revenue sharing. More things come in, so yeah, it's, it's.
So the hundred. A hundred and eight is not.
No, 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 it's not.
Are you pulling, you pulling this out of?
This is the best.
Where do, so where do those?
Those numbers come from, well, she needs the bond balance and then I balance.
I think the money bank.
Yeah, exactly, and then the bottom is where the money is. So what actually could be in the bank? Yeah, so the free, yeah, three oh six, plus one oh eight, minus ninety-nine, plus twenty, but whatever. The profit.
It's going to be somewhere around.
Yes, and we won't go through the end of the part.
The whole.
I only. PTA activity. All right, I don't. We might.
Bill is ready to step by. One always.
We'll, we'll set the special, that's. Yes, we'll do that, I vote, we vote on that. Uh, we can levy up to one mil minus seventy-five. Once we get our budget. Figure out what that. We can decide.
According to Rob.
Okay, yes. So then if they roll that, we'll lessen it from one. We can levy up to one. So yeah, we will. Develop to that full, whatever that levy is.
Yeah, so we had thought it was just, it is one, that's what the goal was, and that's what it is, but. All valid. Millions are up to. Only limiting any amount on your. Any other, anything else on the general fund project?
Sure that we didn't pay out the, um, program. Yeah, June. Okay. The what?
That's the, uh, that's. The planning document that they have to have or that we have to have to vote.
Yeah, you need it every five years.
Very. Fire funds to the hundred and sixty nine thousand right now. There are a few things in here, one of which is. Creating the run rate.
Eighteen fifty. You're eighteen fifty right now, and what we talked about doing was if you have no training. Seventeen fifty, and if you have training, learning, wanting to, you go up to forty dollars a dollar. And then that way, then. Mark thought that his guys would handle that by. And that way would give them, them to take the training.
I wonder how much resistance. But we thought.
Yeah. So you're dropping.
Drop to a dollar, yeah.
Five.
Once again, that. The ones that aren't.
Five.
Using the firebird class drop. But fair. It's not like we just got a. You know, we don't have that situation. We've been there for a while. Higher class. Anyway, that's kind of what we have in view. Come back to that. Equipment supplies, maybe getting five new portable radios. Twenty four hundred dollars. Yeah. Trailer thing over the time. And six by six. Big item there. And then I get thirty grand in the maintenance improvement to the building. Couple hours down there with those guys a couple weeks ago and. Fox eating before. What's going on? But they really do. One, their body. Period, two. Building for overall looking. Looks nicer. Nice looking vehicles. Take some pride. There's also. Five, six grand. Having a more professional. Walling up. Some of the kitchen work order tops. Anyway, that's what that's all about. And move on to road budget, I did have the six mile away. Number up here. Fifty eight grand from this year's. Which is point six million, which. Twenty five. Know it. Plus what he was left over. Vehicle fund, you have payout of which doesn't make it actually happen. So that'll probably be zero dollar budget. Vehicle. That's the second. Doesn't come on. Well, now the first, yeah, the first. Yeah, that's. I'm sure it's gonna be more than that.
So, the taxable that I need to go from.
That was the, that was the last year's plus one point, well, plus three point.
Yeah, you'll have, that might be helpful when we're setting up. Fire special assessment. Taxable value will be a little bit different.
All right, any other comments in public on that budget? All right, and I will make a motion to. All right, seller resolution. So I just put a three percent increase for inflation on mine. Just a motion to.
You made a motion for like.
There was no, no, all I saw was for mine, three percent. And it's the same number I put in for everybody on. I don't care what you do that, do that, three percent. Across the board. I don't know, I mean, if the salaries were good, three percent is fair. Where I'm at. And really discussion. All right, and we'll call it over here, Richard. So firemen. The proposal, I'm gonna make a motion to put the untrained. Firemen or whatever, employees of the fire department at seventeen fifty. And the trained firemen. Who's sports?
We're dropping, waiting to find people.
My view on that is. Those front guys have a better feel for their people. Discussion. Yeah, supposed to say. All right, fire officer salary. It, but then same stuff that put those numbers in the. Budget. Chief at forty two hundred, position chief at sixteen eighty. Captain. Twelve sixty a piece, the last four there at twenty one hundred and twenty three. Didn't get an inflationary increase last year, so. All right, then, all of you say aye. Okay, I just put, okay, let's go back to the credit card thing. Fire chief Marcus asked for a county credit card. Buy stuff on the phone card. Yeah. As on the bills to bill, yeah. You can say it's pretty small though.
Yeah, we spoke in twenty fifteen. We got it so that things like little office supply that we weren't even on the credit card. We got it for. Very specific, very narrow. Thing that you could use the credit card for. Some things you have to get along with, somebody would be in a credit card and money. What, what exactly would you be using the credit, you only have a ten thousand dollar, and if there's more risk, it's like the whole process can have a higher. Yeah, but what I mean, what would, so you'd also have to get with the clerk, and you have to submit documentation for it. So there could be a lot more work on her to make sure that she had those. Is this just like a periodic thing?
Well, if I go to the therapist, I pick up a handful of.
Okay, you're not gonna do that. Nothing, you're just talking about what we're talking about. But, yeah.
And that's what, what the bills I said, one of you, like, about bill. Stuff I picked up the last month or six months or whatever, hope whenever I remember to rebuild. Total amount of something like that. What I've had to purchase.
Not to get. Going to buy a paper. Posted. So the separate credit account for the fire department is authorized. Are you gonna share our ten thousand, are you?
That's up to you. I just want to credit card advice.
But then the motion will be that he would be an authorized. But you have your own car that's tied to the.
Yeah.
You have a.
All of it is there.
I'll get with.
Uh, MTA conference is coming up in April. Probably put a value on a heavy rescue truck to get somewhere.
The value. Your truck.
Yeah, I didn't build it.
Any idea what anyone.
Well, I asked the guy down there and he thought seven hundred. I thought that's high, but. We're gonna go with that. If something were to happen, we lost that truck. You're gonna buy. You're not gonna get a new one. To be a perfect selling thousand dollars, you're not gonna be able to buy it. You're gonna wait three years for a truck. Four or five. You're gonna wait three years to get some dollars for your truck. After orders that or. For your truck to run away. If it's insurance claim. You're not gonna wait for three years to get your. I would ask. Couple different levels.
Yes, I, I would move it bump it to five hundred. We.
But I, I'm just, just. What a costly building truck and I'm seeing there's no apartments. And the timeline is sixty three years.
Yep. I'm gonna just put one.
Yeah, that's right. Just fixing one, yeah. Yeah, what's another?
Anyway, motion to be, raise value on current of the heavy rescue five hundred thousand. All right, our support. For the discussion. Yeah. All right, with that, I'll open up the public comment. Second, back line here, Chris.
Yeah, just for you to really. And price. What happened with Russian.
Yeah.
We don't need to be able to build by thirty five thousand again.
Oh, that's for sure.
And get a copy of the bid when it comes through. They have hard times tracking that down there too, so. How much was we doing happy about it last year either? And then. One of us should reach out to the village and see if we can get them to do it too because. Say thousand dollars. Do the whole road. And there's a wet spot in there. Think spot. I think that's an illegal section, but I'm not sure where the line is. Again, the road commission needs to be pulled by. Elmers will come out there and not know anything about it. Exactly. It, it needs to have a drainage pile put in under there somehow. Same thing kind of happened. They just did, Elmer just did the road. They don't. They don't seem to pay any attention, so if we can do a little due diligence. We'll keep our roads in a lot better. The comment about set trees down on the road. It's not the first time I hear it all the time. Lot of trees. And I talked to Bert about it. Wanna do it. Did it work? Imagine that. I thought when you work for somebody, that's what you signed up for, but. I mean, if it's, if it's way out of sight more than they can handle, then I think they should look at contract. I mean, just not doing it. That's just my feeling. And then the, uh, earned sick time, the county is. Do that too. It's gonna be a big change. Thursday. Pass the bill in the state senate. The senate passed a different one than the house, so now they have to work it out.
Okay. Anybody else for public comment today? All right. We're done. Adjourned for the night. Oh, uh, board, board. Let's write it up. That actually has something.
Could I have the name of the attorney that Marv was talking about?
You may have my copy of the, uh, proposal.
Great, thank you.
Anything else? All right, we're done. Have a good night.
Stick in this bag.
Something I've been doing.
It's been good. Working a lot. Spent last three days shoveling everybody in their brother's roof off. Well, our, our roof of the lake house and then. Everybody else calling him, will you come shovel my roof?
That's like the most horrible feeling when you get off the roof and get done with that. You can't.
In a way, we get paid for that. Not directly, but you know. That is extremely dangerous.
Bought a new one in four years. Exactly.